Words back in session. Are definitely the 2021 graduate.
So, good morning, Jay Pennington. Bureau Chief of the Department. You know, Bureau of, it's called Information Analysis Services, but really like the K-12 data. Chief statistician. So periodically, I know many of you, some of you are new, but I'll periodically come to the board and present data. And, you know, one thing I've learned this morning so far is that I really want to go to Space Camp. I did not bring enough pictures. So if that was your expectation, sorry to disappoint you in advance. We, I do have sort of three sets of reports that I want to share with you. The first is graduation rates, the second is our post-secondary readiness report, so taking a look at like the college enrollment snapshot. And then lastly, the closing the achievement gaps legislative report, which dovetails nicely with one of your priorities as well. These are sort of chronological in terms of when we release them. And this is the first time I've had an opportunity to come and present to you. So I'm just jumping in and feel free, I move quickly for those who don't know me, but please ask questions, let's make this interactive. Forty-five minutes of stats could get all dense after a while. So you might, the first thing you might say to me or think about is, you know, why am I presenting the class of 2021 data to you? When the class of 22 just graduated, right? So like, why aren't these data ready? And the answer to that is that in Iowa, you know, summer grads, those that complete before the start of school in the fall, will be counted as a four-year graduate. So we actually will release the 22, class 22, early next calendar year. So there's a bit of a lag that exists there. So this gives you a snapshot of just over a decade in terms of our four-year cohort rate. So we're tracking kids when they start high school as freshmen. We actually go back and look to see if they were in eighth grade, so we have to make sure they're first-time freshmen. And then how did they fare four years later? And we do a four-year rate and a five-year rate. And as you can see here, you know, long-term, looking at the decade, we're up about two percentage points. But more specifically, and just a quick point too. You know, all of these data points are really the first set of real data that we have about performance during the pandemic. So you need to sort of put that into consideration in terms of what I'm going to present to you here. But you can see that there was a fairly sizable drop of graduation rate between, excuse me, the class of 20 and class of 21. So that's what it looks like for kids overall. And then jumping, I'm going to show you graduation rates and then quickly dropout rates. So this gives you a sense of, and you know, specifically the up is focused on this like green arrow, that decade view. So we are by and large up overall. However, due to the pandemic, we did see a fairly significant drop in graduation rate. We would expect, you know, with the more recent data that we'll present next year, I would expect that number to go up. In particular, when we look at two things. First, dropouts are up, again, down across the decade, but every subgroup, you know, whether it's white students, black students, students of poverty, you know, dropout rates went up. And I think the big takeaway here is we are seeing a larger, larger percent of kids that are taking longer. So we'll see a nice bump in that fifth-year rate that I mentioned. But we did also see a larger percent of kids drop out nine through 12. So if you think about the disruption in that last school year, you know, schools were really focused on, how do I get kids in school? How do I deal with hybrid learning, et cetera? And so kids that were sort of on the bubble or on the margin that might be less engaged are going to take longer or drop out. So, you know, while we, we certainly didn't want to see this number go down, graduation rate or dropout rates go up. We expect that to rebound, you know, as learning and more in-person learning occurs and, you know, more stable environment throughout the year.
Do you have statistics that indicate, you know, that dropout at grade 12, grade 10? So obviously, if you're, you know, senior and you drop out, you, you know, may not come back to complete. But if you can see those nine, 10, 11 grade students reengage, that's a positive. But any preliminary data that indicates where that happened or how?
Yeah, absolutely. So, so just real quick, the dropout rate is sort of an annual statistic. We're looking between fall and next fall to make sure kids were engaged throughout the year or did they re-enroll. Versus grad rate, which is a four-year stat. So kids do come back. And when you look at, into your specific question, when you look at, you know, grades nine through 12, you're going to see more dropout grade 12. I mean, that, you know, 11, 12 are much larger than, you know, freshman or sophomore year. And, you know, and you see different patterns too, when you look at what districts decide to do. Like in other words, if a kid is not getting enough credits, do we then promote that freshman to a sophomore? Or do we hold them as a freshman until they get enough credits to move on? Or is it based on age and grade level versus actual accumulation of credits? So you need to actually look at the credit data to say like, to your point, I think, which is how close are these kids to actually completing? You know, the other thing I'll say is we are going to see a sizable jump, as I mentioned, in that fifth-year rate for next, for the class of 21. So that's sort of the first bucket or the first report, grad rates. The second thing that we released since the last time I presented is the Iowa Post-Secondary Readiness Reports. And it's a little bit of a strange name, but it's really a website. And I'll take you to the website. This is publicly available to anyone that wants to look at it. But the real focus is not just, you know, what are the percent of kids that are completing high school in four years, five years, six years? But what are the percent of students that actually go on to enroll in college? And it's hard to be stuck in this chair because I want to like go point, so I'll just use my laser pointer. We've got four different, I'm just going to get up, four different data points. This, these are different cohorts of kids. The first one is really looking at what are the percent of students that are intending to go to college based on their exit survey in high school? The next one is what are the percentage of students that actually enrolled that next fall? Then how many of the same sets of kids completed a second year of high, or I'm sorry, second year of college? So they, they persisted to sophomore year. And then lastly, how many graduated six years later? So intent, actual action, persistence, and then completion is what this is meant to show you across, again, a decade period of time. And then, you know, there's lots of, you know, good data here if we wanted to look at this by poor kids or, you know, non-poor. You can see it will adjust the percentages and show you that same set of measures. But this is only one report. There's a whole series. You can look at this by high school. You can look at this more specifically, like how many students actually had to take remedial math, those, that kind of data. And I could spend an hour just on the site, but this is a very impactful sort of takeaway. And just wanted to highlight that this exists. The big takeaway.
Sorry, I was post-secondary, just traditional college, four-year, university, four-year in this report.
So it includes anyone that enrolls in a community college, either in-state, out-of-state. So it's a national view. To George's point earlier, the sort of non-traditional paths that kids take, right? Like those that get involved in a trade. We have an MOU with Iowa Workforce Development. We will be adding apprenticeship data, so if you're in a formal apprenticeship.
Some of the decline could be attributable to the popularity of these other programs.
Somewhat.
I mean, I don't know. I don't claim to be the statistician.
No, absolutely. It's a great question. And so when we've done some initial analysis with the apprenticeship data, at most, it would bump these, these numbers, one less than a percentage point. So it's not going to drastically change the picture. Another piece that is missing in terms of like, what are other viable options for kids that we should want to capture? And that would be those that go into the military. You know, George has mentioned he was in the Marines. For obvious reasons, there's all sorts of security and sharing issues. But just to be clear, this is sort of the traditional path, community college, four-year, et cetera. And when we take a look at these data, the New York Times just did an article about this a week and a half ago, taking a look. This is a national phenomenon. Kids aren't seeing necessarily the clear value of the amount of money that's being spent on college versus the ultimate returns. So it's not just an Iowa phenomenon, it's a national phenomenon. And it's certainly presented here, like, you know, nine percentage points in the percentage of kids that are, are planning to go to a two-year, four-year. Only 60% in the most recent year are actually going on to enroll in college. So we're doing a deeper analysis within state. The other piece that I wanted to just highlight is this isn't just Department of Data data. This is a collaboration. We're working with our work colleagues, we're working with Jeremy's Division, Community College and Workforce Prep. We're working with Iowa College Aid. So this is, while I'm presenting to this to you, we've got a subgroup or a team that's actually digging in and taking a look at these data. He heard to say like, why aren't kids going to college? The, the numbers are pretty clear. You know, the returns in terms of the amount of money you're going to make across your lifetime is very, is very significant if you do do these traditional paths. But recognizing that this isn't the complete picture of all the options.
Do we have stats of kids that entered the military? Is that something you keep?
It is not.
In some ways, certainly in education. So they don't let you enter the military and say you can just sit for three, because you're four years. Definitely, or come out with a skill set that you didn't have.
Oh, absolutely.
George would say that too, I'm sure.
Yes.
Yeah. Be interesting to know those numbers. I'm curious.
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah, you expect the trend line to continue to slide down.
So there's also, if you look at other things like, you know, when the economy is hot, college enrollment goes down, right? So it's, you know, and while there are sort of cracks that are being seen, you know, in terms of inflation, et cetera. You know, when economies go down, you do see what more kids going back to school. It's a known phenomenon. So I think it depends. It depends on what happens with the economy. I also think, you know, with some of the more recent disruptions, you know, with the pandemic, uncertainty around with that freshman year is going to look like. I would expect more kids to, you know, take that year off and come back at some point. Although the stats aren't great when we look at that more traditionally. But if you don't go right away, the likelihood that you'll ever go is fairly slim. But yes, I think it depends on what happens with the economy. The economy does start going down, I would expect. Fewer jobs need to retool and be able to, you know, land a good career. So jumping back, so the third piece that I wanted to show you is a copy of a report that, that we do annually. So, and I try to pick a different view and topic each year so that it's not the same set of information year after year. In this particular, so it's a legislative report. We try to focus on the achievement gap. In this particular case, we've wanted to focus on, you know, what did the gaps look like related to learning during the pandemic? So that's largely what this is going to, what I'm going to show you. And in particular, the gap between white, black students, Hispanic and white students, and poor and non-poor kids. But before I get to that, you know, who are the kids that attend Iowa schools? And this gives you a 20-year view, just a little bit over, over that window. The percent of white students is going down, the percent of minority students is going up. And, you know, we, we've seen over this 20-year period, there's a slight increase in enrollment. That has changed a little with the more recent figures. Next thing I wanted to just show you, and so throwing some census data, just to sort of put Iowa in context of other states. The estimate showed that in 2020, the national population of students in schools nationally, that the tipping point was in 2020 in terms of switching from a majority-minority to a minority-majority. So in other words, in the nation, there are now more students of color in, in, in the public school system than, than white students. And when we look at, you know, Iowa, the dark blue numbers represent the 11 districts that are currently minority-majority and everybody else. And the, I wanted to put that in context, you know, certainly white students, Iowa's more homogeneous. But it will change. It has been changing. So are our educators, are our schools equipped to handle a more diverse student population over time? Those are the kinds of questions we should be asking ourselves. But just to give you a sense of geographically, you know, it tends to be around, with some exceptions, around those sort of urban pockets within the state. Next thing I want to show you, on the Y-axis, we have, and this is the Iowa statewide assessment of student progress, the ISAS results. We're looking at 2019, spring 2019 versus spring 21. Because of the pandemic, in 2020, we didn't have results. The assessment was canceled that year. And what you're looking at is the, you know, so at the bottom, this is within year, the black student performance on average in third grade versus white student performance on average in third grade. And then this represents the gap in that scale score. So these numbers are a little bit hard to wrap your head around. So if you think about, you know, let's say the ACT, right? It's got a high of 36. We're kind of used to that scale. You know, it would be the difference between, you know, let's say a 30 and a 20. Let's say, it's, it's just as an example to get you, get a sense of the scale. So this will, so you can look at sort of the pairs between 19 and 21 to say, did the gap get bigger? Did it get smaller? That kind of thing. But looking at average performance of student groups. And so if you go to the report, we've got, you know, six different sets of these. But there's a lot to sort of look at. Then I tried to boil it down to, you know, a color-coded chart, so you didn't have to do the math, right? But the math is important. And there's sort of three pieces here. Green represents that, that the actual gap is decreasing. And then the orange represents that it's also decreasing, but kind of for the wrong reason. And just to be a little explicit, when we look at, so just keep, keep this decrease, it's in orange, so decreasing for the wrong reason. And then if you go back here in this report, you can see that, when we looked at, and this is 11th grade. What I mean by wrong reason is that if you look at 2019, spring, the gap between black-white students in 11th grade in math was 53 scale score points. And, and just on the surface, it goes down to 49. So that gap is decreasing. That's a good thing. But the problem here is that the, the top is also decreasing at a greater rate than the bottom is increasing, if that sort of makes sense. So in this particular case, white students lost ground more than black students gaining in achievement. So it's, that's why I'm referring to it as the wrong reason. Because you don't, and ideally, you'd see white students increasing, black students increasing, and closing the gap at the same time. So the bottom table just represents, so if you think about, you know, we typically track 10 different subgroups. You know, white students, black students. There's seven different subgroups. Students with disabilities, free reduced-price lunch, or students in poverty, and then English language learners. And then you think about there, well, there's nine grade levels that are tested. We've got English language arts, and we've got math. So when you put all that together, it's like 200 data points that you're really trying to trend to say, are we making progress? Are we not making progress? In this particular case, we're only focusing on three different groups. So it's like 54 different combinations. And so it's, it's a lot for schools to look at, right? Particularly if you're really big, diverse school district. But when you look at just the percentages, so across those three subgroups between black, white, and increasing the gap is 48%. So that's the largest, the gap is growing. Then decreasing, but for the wrong reason, add another 26%. So the takeaway here is we're not making progress. And the pandemic and the disruptions that occurred widened the gap more than anything between the subgroups that were viewed. Does that kind of make sense? So then there's a statistic called an effect size. So what we're doing here is, and an effect size goes from one to zero. The closer you are to the one, the stronger the effect. So in other words, you know, when we look at an effect size of 0.74 for, you know, poor and non-poor, that's a large effect. So there's not only a significant difference, but the magnitude of that difference is sizable. So it, you know, not to get into significance, but the larger the groups that you're analyzing, the much more likely that you're going to see statistical significance. At the same time, is it a meaningful difference, right? That's what this is trying to depict. So what's the summary? That achievement gaps overall are continuing to increase. The, the gaps between black and white students are not just significant, but also large. Between poor and non-poor, they're approaching a large effect. And the effect between Hispanic and whites are considered media. So there's a lot to be done. And the last piece that I wanted to just present to you is an actual solution, right? So I'm, you know, I always sort of, I love coming to present to you guys, but I always feel like, you know, I'm like the bringer of bad news in a lot of ways, right? Like, there's a lot of work to be done, right? Graduation rates are down, dropouts up, the gaps are growing. At the same time, there's a logical explanation for that, right? It's been, you know, a crazy two years. So how do we get back on track? How do we address the issues? And so the last piece is an analysis that we completed, and this is with the class of 21, taking a look at math pathways, or the math courses that kids take when they're in high school. So the first table represents kids that took between, actually beyond high school. So starting in eighth grade to senior year, how many took five years of math? How many took four years of math? How many skipped a senior year? Even though my son, you know, I tried to, you know, tell him this last year, you should really stay in math. I kind of lost that battle. But these are the hard data in terms of what does that do in terms of student performance? Whether that's results on the large-scale assessment or college enrollment. So we tried to bucket, you know, folks into a traditional five-year. So in this particular case, you know, students took Algebra I, Geometry, that traditional path, an accelerated path, so, and so forth. This next one are the percent of students by the different subgroups, white students, black students, Hispanic, poor, non-poor, that took each of these different pathways. So just focusing on the left-hand bar, you don't see a large, you know, yes, you see some differences, but by and large, that's pretty close in terms of a range. So then the next piece takes a look at proficiency. And particularly math performance for the class of 20. And the percent of students that were proficient on that 11th grade assessment, bucketed by the different pathways. And, you know, certainly, I think the big thing to highlight is those that took an accelerated pathway, the gaps are almost gone. Yes, there are some differences. Certainly, when you look at a traditional pathway, it's getting a little bit better. But, you know, if we're looking at black students, I mean, that's a, you know, a 28 percentage point difference in terms of proficient, not proficient, for students that took that traditional pathway. And then lastly, what's, all right, I think I didn't put it, it's in the report. There is a, I figured I'd run out of time. We also look at college enrollment, and the picture looks very different, sorry, very much the same. Certainly, there's differences to what you see here. So 11th grade results. There's a similar picture when you look at those that took the different pathways and actually did go on and enroll in college in the fall of 2021.
If kids were wearing disabilities, how much larger is their gap?
Significant.
Yeah.
I mean.
Of those that go to college?
I don't know the number of, we could pull it up. And it wouldn't be based on that pathway, but you could get a sense of students with disabilities, how many go to college, it's on the website. So what's the takeaway here? Rigor, pushing kids to more aggressive, you know, four years, definitely, five years ideal. And if you're able to handle the rigor of the courses, certainly an accelerated pathway is likely to have the best outcome.
So do you have that kind of data by district where you can see those efforts and the results? I know this is the whole, and how they're doing that success.
So yes, we can look at district by district. Just to be clear, it's not like on a website.
Yeah, no, yeah.
Unlike the post-secondary readiness report. But yes, absolutely, we can really say, you know, what does this picture look like in Des Moines, Westonburg, or Bucky, AGWS?
What are the common elements that, you know, say encourage, propel, or whatever, the students to take that accelerated path? And to make sure they take that as a senior, you know, some of those elements of you. Encourage is one way, but.
Yes, and back to my own personal situation, not to make it personal, but, you know, you know, my mom and, my wife and I, you know, encourage that. So what does the supportless system look like at home? What does the support system look like in the school in order to ensure kids are on the right path, taking courses? And, you know, to some extent, kids do get some choice there too, in terms of what they.
Kids kind of, I mean, is it kind of, I mean, I'm assuming if they're in high school, talking to like a career counselor or someone, you know, to talk about, you know, sort of kind of what things that you should be taking up. Assuming maybe teachers are recommending, you know, they did really well in their class, maybe they should move on and take this class. And they maybe talk to a career counselor saying, you know, this, if you're really good at this, you're going to be selling it. These are fantastic opportunities. If you don't, then you're cut off here. And you can't be like selling that, maybe once you go to college, because, you know, I mean, colleges have your rights. You might have to take that college or class even money. I mean, I'm assuming that's happening, but. I mean, I'm assuming that's happening, but.
I mean, I think it starts with that eighth grade plan, you know, what, what, and like, what's the support system that it says? So every kid in, you know, in Iowa high school has to start part of, in eighth grade, rather. There's a requirement for that plan, but to what extent the, the district's really using that in pushing kids to, you know, to have those conversations? We don't have good information on that, other than we do know the numbers that are completing those plans year after year after year.
Is there revisiting of that plan after the eighth grade, second grade, I mean, that's great to get, and eighth grade, like, I have no idea. I mean, I kind of college is still hard to find yet. So I mean, I feel like, once you get to high school, I mean, by sophomore year with certain colleges, and then maybe junior year again, you know, it's fine. Have those conversations. I mean, I feel like I was in my year counselors office by, by junior year once a month, you know?
Yeah, in, in my high school experience, there, there was a required meeting every year with, with our counselor. And, you know, you had to, had to pick. But so that's, again, my personal experience. I mean, from a requirement standpoint, it's only, it only has to be eighth grade. But districts that do it well will revisit this annually.
And do we know which ones, I mean, like I said before, I've had, I've heard stories, I think Robert, who was on the student advocacy board, said before that, you know, minority students oftentimes are not encouraged to take accelerated classes or courses or things like that, you know? So if they're not encouraged to do that, and minority students are being overlooked, then you might just not know. And maybe the home supports aren't there, you know, I mean, tell them that maybe you should, you know, or encourage them to, because maybe they just don't know. So you'll have any data probably on that, you know, how many minority students are encouraged to, or things like that, because I mean, that would practice too, right?
So we don't have the encourage, certainly we have, you know, these numbers show, and, and again, can look at this by district. So are there gaps in, and this is at the state level, differences in, you know, poor and non-poor students' color, you know, taking, you know, rigorous or less rigorous courses? Absolutely, we have data. And yes, you do see some, certainly.
Yeah, I know for math specifically, your counselors, especially now that workforce is becoming more of a thing to just enter right into a technical college, they sometimes just tell you to take technical math instead of algebra two or calculus. And you have those exciting math courses. They say, you don't really use calculus in your electrical job, take technical math instead.
If you're being told that, are they telling you, you know, yes, this might be, you know, what you need if you want this kind of job, but, you know, if you don't take this, these are your kind of jobs you're cutting out or future, whatever careers that you're kind of cutting out. I mean, is it like, yes, this, and if you want career in that, that's fine, but if you want to meet to this or this or this, somebody you're going to meet this and this and this?
Yes, most of the students taking technical math know they're just going in workforce.
Yeah, that makes sense.
I don't, they don't envision themselves going to college, or maybe not going to college, but not going to afford college.
Another part of the conversation is to be, somebody taking accelerated class, you have to have all the upbringing in the elementary or the middle school years to be in a position to be successful. If you're not successful, then accelerated math may be good for you, but it's something that's of interest to you as far as, yeah, I'm not good at math. So early on, this math game, you know, somewhat sequential major for, for some math. Courses, looking at what happens on the graduation things, assuming also looking at things on the development, as far as on material math, how much intervention is on. Traditionally, there, there is intervention, but I'm not sure the quality of that, I, I'm not saying it's bad, it's still. It'd be a danger in comparing this to success, just as you're, you're suggesting. Do I eliminate certain areas that I, I can go into? Sure, you are when you don't take accelerated path. But that doesn't mean it lessens your opportunity to be successful in what you choose to do. As, as, I mean, math just isn't my thing. Well, if we base, we look to on this, be scary. But the truth is, again, I think it's more subtle thing. Here's a guy that took four years of high school math, never took another math course the rest of his life. And he took his graduate record exams and did really well in math, my graduate. But it has nothing to do with much of anything that I did in the course of my life. You know, so, again, look at that's kind of scary, wow, but, yeah.
We just have time, make an executive decision to move on. Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
Thanks.
We have Workgroup College Educator Preparation.
While we're making that shift, there's one thought I could share, just to approach point. I think it's important as we think about the educational plans and the role the guidance counselors share, that the number of those students that those guidance counselors are needed with to prepare those plans is an important acknowledgement, because thinking about the role that those counselors play in shaping those plans and then how those students are empowered to manage those plans along their experience in school, I think it's just, it's a lot. So in making those decisions, yeah, putting those plans together and managing them through the four or five years that those plans are imposed is isn't just taking them off, it's having a good thing to begin, so.
And having someone who is, you know, you know, I mean, our guidance counselor is fine, plus one university building. Everyone was in that all the time, we're crying, people were, some purchases, right? I mean, you have to like go there and be like, sometimes everybody tells you, you don't want to hear, it is not good, right?
I just think of that comment earlier, we're sharing guidance counselors, so the number of students that they're creating plans for and then making those decisions, so my comment.
Thanks for having me. I'm, I am, let's say, we'll be educator preparation program. And I was department of education, I have my colleague, Dr. Kelly, I got here also. We will talk about some of the programs, we have both collaborators on. And we have Dr. Snyder from Workford College, who can answer questions about Workford College, that I presented to first. Just a little overview of the whole process. The, the process of review of educator preparation programs begins about three years in advance. So two and a half, three years ago, we, we have started this process. In this specific case, I was not included because I was a faculty at Workford College too. And I, even though I'm presenting this to you, because at the current moment, our team is including the two people who have moved to education department from Workford College, but I had nothing to do with the whole process of reviewing this, this program. However, I have read the report that Dr. Weiss prepared for us before he left. He was very invested in making sure that, that because the program had began this process early on, that we can finish up what they had began and were very close to finish, and that's why I'm presenting it to you today. So the, the three years ago, they started with self-study, looked at the program, wrote an institutional report, shared that with the Department of Education. There were so many background forces before, a site visit that happened last year in the fall. And, and, and you, you have in the report that who were the people who were in the site visit? We had people from other programs in the, in Iowa, and we had two representatives from the department who were involved in that site visit and writing the report that you see. The report that you have in front of you, in, under the executive summary, you see one piece that is the summary of how Workford has addressed the different standards. So at this moment, when we have brought the program to you, all the standards are met, and you have that included in that piece. We also always include the report, the original report that was shared with Workford, and that's the longer attachment that you have in this report. Just because we want you to see the whole picture of what were some of the initial concerns and how Workford addressed those. So that's a little overview for you, and I'm going to move on to sharing some of the things that the team had recognized that Workford is doing very strongly and some of the compliance concerns that they addressed. The, the several strengths of the program that was, that were mentioned also in the report, included but are not limited to very good early alert system to support students when they're not doing very good. The mentor faculty having very good relationship and involvement with K-12 schools. Most candidates do more than hundred hours of field experience. The requirement was eighty hours, but they do more than hundred hours prior to student teaching. That's in addition to student teaching. And there were so many compliments from the cooperating teachers and advocates in K-12 when they had the Workford students or graduates in their schools about how well they were prepared. I'm moving on to the six different standards that we have looked at. The governance and resources was not first met, and that's, it, it's something that very commonly you see, that lack of either resources, or, and in this case, it was somewhat that way because the full-time faculty didn't have appropriate time release or there wasn't enough of the full-time faculty oversight for several programs. So the Workford looked at that and addressed that, and we will talk about some of that. But that, that includes that they had to do a lot of administrative responsibilities, including some of the reports that are requirements by the Department of Education. And one of the main things they have done is creating some of those oversight that they need to have for the curriculum, so they have those staff, faculty, and they have provided a full-time. They have provided time release for the new department chair, and they have provided admin support staff to the department to provide some, to take on some of the administrative duties. Then, then there's a diversity standard, that there was no compliance in that standard. The faculty standard is next, and the regular load of the faculty at Workford College is seven. And it was determined that a certainty that has been exceeded. So there was not enough appropriate time for faculty to give professional development or the, the additional responsibilities. So there, there also, there was another compliance concern. There was no adequate faculty qualified to oversee the ESL endorsement and PE endorsement. Two line of faculty were added for oversight of the PE and ESL endorsement. So that, that complaint is resolved, and a professional staff position is added to reduce the admin issue, so that, that also has been resolved, and there is no compliance concern in the faculty standard. The assessment was in place, and I like to share this, that there was a time that Larry used to tell me, that there was a time that there was not an accurate assessment at all, or there was not a systemic assessment of the program at some point, like ten years ago, when they were looking at the different programs. It's not about specifically to Workford. But now when we are looking at the programs, they do have a systemic assessment. They have most of the pieces in place, but a lot of time, because we're taking all of these professionals to the field, they find all these other ways that they can improve that assessment of the program. And that's the case with here, there were some areas that they had recognized that they could improve the assessment, the alignment of the standard, the course evaluations, and the curriculum in overall. And Workford has put a plan in place to do that regularly. I'm moving into the clinical standard, and the clinical, as I mentioned, the students are eating way over the required hours that they have to. But one thing that was a little questioning was the management of diverse placement, because all the students are required to be placed in a diverse, have a diverse experience, a placement experience. And what Workford has done is now, first of all, defining what that diverse experience would mean for the different students and adding other opportunities, such as programs out of state and some other opportunities in state that would, that would be explained as the diverse student, which is very, which is a situation where it is different from the experience of their candidates. The knowledge, skills, and dispositions, there was no compliance concern. The BOE had also received, the curriculum had approved it for the first round. And then the site visit teams had also looked at the curriculum, and there was no complaint concerning that. With that being said, we are open here to listen to your questions. I'm happy to answer questions about the process. Dr. Snyder can answer questions about Workford program itself. And I would like to recommend the program to be fully approved until through the next review schedules for twenty twenty and twenty twenty-nine.
Questions?
Mr. Cal, that was interesting to have two former Workgroup employees.
I take the. I take the, I, I was one of the problems, because I was the ESL oversight before.
And did you, when you review, when you do the review, do you look at issues that were issued seven years ago?
Yes.
Are those still the same set, set of issues that we're having today?
Yes.
Which concerns me, that, that we in fact made an attempt to correct these, but we didn't correct these. And now we're still dealing with those. Could you, could you speak to that?
Yes, that's a very important point. Actually, we do that. As soon as they submit the institutional report, we look at the previous response that they had provided to see these are patterned issues that has been repeated, or they had said that they were going to address, and they are not. So yes, we have looked at that. The, the, there is always something that you can improve in any program. So we always find new issues. So if the nature of the new issues are very different from the previous time, we, we look at it as a new process and program. If the program is having the same issues and they have not taken the action they had said they take, we will not bring them here to recommend them to you for full approval. In that case, we usually recommend them for conditional or non-approval. So yes, we carefully look at that, and we, we communicate that very clearly with the program when the issue has been repeated with no changes or action taken.
So, so this issue of staff leaving, was that an issue seven years ago?
It was not, diversity was one of the issues.
Issue.
And then we, each time that we file an annual report with the Department of Education, because we do it annually as well, that self-populates in our report, and we need to make sure we address. We've been doing that all along, yeah.
I recognize the difficulty now, we're all competing for students. It's a huge thing now. Colleges are, are doing that, less kids going to college, more competition. And I know that's difficult, and adding more staff with less kids becomes really problematic. I, I know it does, but you do an outstanding job, I think, with your program, I think we all, just from experience, no bad.
Well, thank you.
So, yeah, thank you for what you did.
Other questions?
I'd move away from the teacher program to Workford until the next week, you three, twenty-eight, twenty-nine.
Okay, try. To move in second to. Can you further discussion? Bring none of those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Gary.
Congratulations.
Thanks.
Every. All right, we have the you and I, listeners of the out. All online.
Thank you. And I have Dr. Benjamin Forsyth from UNI here uh, to answer questions about this program. Um, the reason we brought this program, so this is a, uh, you and I have already an approved program to offer the endorsements that is mentioned in this report. However, uh, they are planning to offer a substantially different delivery mode. And according to chapter seventy nine, I, I will move to eighty-one, seventy-nine nine. Uh, when a delivery change is happening, we are required to bring that to the board for the board approval. For some of the smaller changes, um, director can approve those changes until the next review happening. You and I has a review coming up in twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. And that's why you see that the recommendation is good until then. Um, we have reviewed this um, application for change uh, from you and I. They have submitted a full report and I, I have provided a very brief summary of that for you in the report that you have in front of you. They are requesting to change the delivery format to offer an accelerated online delivery for already approved program. Um, this program is leading to a bachelor of art in elementary with minor in special education. The endorsements are K six, and a, and teacher elementary endorsement of uh, one or two and K eight um, instructional strategies might moderate to sixty. Um, the changes include the modality uh, moving into online, but synchronous um, opportunities for students to attend the classes. The main reason for this to provide the opportunity for current parent educators to be able to attend those classes uh, and make it more widely available to um, candidates in Iowa. Um, eight, uh, the, some of the changes include eight-week format for the courses for an eight credit terms that are more aligned with what is happening also in the classroom. So the candidates who are coming to the, to this program have to be current. Uh, they have to have a current associate degree and they have to be serving as a parent educator. So they, they have done some communication, they will be doing communication with the districts where these parent educators are involved and making sure that uh, the duties and responsibilities are aligned with the coursework and they can go and apply what they are learning in the classroom in their work setting. Um, there, the minimum hours of the clinical experience that they will be experiencing at least is two, two thousand four hundred hours. Um, and they will be having support from building and district administrators for reassignments to meet the clinical experience, because that was one of the things that we always look at very closely. When we are talking about an online education program, because it still is very important to meet that. Is um, with that being said, I, I'm going to just share a very brief overview again from the different standpoint of the standard, the governance and resources. They have appropriate faculty oversight and they have committed to hiring the new faculty as needed. Um, they are providing an oversight of the program. Uh, they will have an, a program. Um, like a supervision of the program. Uh, the, they, and then the diversity standard. Uh, there was no compliance, but it seems like that this uh, program is going to open the opportunity to a lot of parent educators that happen to be usually many diverse group of uh, candidates. So um, in that way, it is serving a larger population um, that their program is serving right now. Um, and there are, a, a lot of them are adult learners. So um, that, that, that's also potentially an increase in the diversity of the students. Um, the faculty standard is met. Um, they have the appropriate faculty. Um, and they, they do uh, use the regular process that they use to make sure that the faculty teaching the courses for these programs have the qualification and license sure required to teach these courses for the program. Um, and it is overseen by the, by the education department. The assessment standard, the same thing. Um, they will be including this program in the overall unit assessment. And uh, they will be using the assessment data that they collect to improve this program and the other programs that they have. Uh, the clinical standard is going to be met. Um, and it's going to be actually exceeding the expectation for that standard, the way they have designed this. And um, they will be um, in the classroom of appropriately licensed teachers and they will be meeting the required uh, hours and expectations for the two different endorsements. The knowledge, skills and disposition, um, the current, they currently are using the same approved curriculum. They have made minor changes that is not changing the competencies that the students need to have. Um, and they're expecting that it all, the changes would only improve it and uh, it's also approved by the BOE. Uh, with that being said, um, I do want to uh, recommend that um, state uh, boards will award a full approval for University of North Sun Iowa uh, for the accelerated online practice-based elementary education and special education program. We'll go next to you of unit um, scheduled for twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four.
I think this is a great idea. Um, I support it. But in, in number two, on the department summary, and it talks about that this can potentially increase diversity of the student body and future teachers. It says, I know it says potential, but that door goes both ways. So what's the basis for that, Steve?
So when we were doing the task force, part of the reason that parent educator were a big reason, the, a big population that we looked at were, when the district were talking about parent educators, um, a lot of time they are from uh, lower economics that is families that are from, uh, from uh, people of color, they're from uh, very diverse populations serving in those roles, but maybe they haven't had the opportunity to be in a four-year education preparation program. And that's my um, understanding of how this is going to serve that population. Um, and in their report, they also included some of the information that they had used to make that determination. We have said uh, possibly because it's not always the case. There's not, oh, it's not always that a parent educator is categorized as a diverse candidate, but um, it's potentially serving that population that is, uh, majority of them are from diverse.
And I would add to that too, part of that conversation was how you recruit students. And, and a nice stepping stone is students, parent, parent, teacher. And it's a big part that grow your own and identify kids who otherwise would probably go to that pathway. So we, we're hoping that would be a big part of this as well.
We've sat here through a lot of these in the last uh, six, eight, ten years, a lot of them. But this is exciting. What, what you're doing is, is, is outstanding. I think this is the kind of innovation we would expect to see in higher education. I know where this has been. This is a great idea. We should have been doing this a long time ago. And uh, the letter that we received today about special education, in fact. Uh, so, so many of those associates work under those circumstances and do a great job of, of helping kids. Uh, and giving the opportunity to fulfill that. But now, while I'm uh, if I had my A degree and I work through this process, tell me about general ads. Are there other uh, program or other classes that I need to take in addition to the, to the classes that you're required?
Yeah, so that's part of the magic of what makes this happen, is you have to have an AA or an AS at an accredited university. So, or, you know, can you share?
Sure.
Because we can accept all of the general education requirements, that guarantees that there is, that that portion is completed. But we also have added some redundancy into the program with, with mathematics and social studies and science. And actually, we, we get literacy outside of gen ed, so we're not as worried about that. Looking at, looking at what uh, paras have gotten from some of our other uh, para to, to teacher pipeline programs, we know that most, if not all of social studies content is already covered in an AA, but we can't be sure. And so we've actually created a, a course that, that covers some social studies content that's built in it so that, so that if there is some student that may not have reached that, we will have at least, we will, we will have at least covered that, that minimum amount. For the uh, mathematics, we know that at least three credits of mathematics comes in with an AA or an AS. But because chapter seventy-nine is so clear on, on five particular topics that we need, we've actually made it so that, so that all three of the courses that we teach for mathematics to elementary ed students is still covered within, within uh, the, the time that they're with us. For the science, we do the exact same thing, but we keep it smaller because we know that, we know that almost all of the students with AAs and ASs come in with three credits of science and it's like ninety percent of them are biological sciences or earth science. So we, we run heavy in our, in our science on the physical sciences, but we also throw in a little bit of biological and earth science to make sure we're covering this.
Good, thank you.
It's only offered as an eight-week class and not a sixteen.
That's right. So, so it's built, because the, the, the way we had to do this um, uh, to, to be able to accelerate was to bundle courses that typically aren't taught simultaneously. So for example, I, I'm an educational psychologist. Um, I've been helping to prepare the educational psych course. Um, and I'm actually meeting with uh, two faculty in the Department of Curriculum Instruction who teach a, a first methods course and a math educator uh, who teaches the first math course. We're preparing this eight-week course to blend those three very different topics. Um, we could do that because when, when we, when we meet with them, we take advantage of the fact that they're in a classroom forty hours a, forty hours a week. And we can say, go try it, go see it, come back and tell us what you're, what you're seeing. But that, that's the real innovation here is that, that eight-week package.
And what's your expectation for cohort group, or how many you think you're gonna get through this program, either first year, second year?
Yeah, um, so part of that rests on what the governor's registered apprenticeship program creates. Um, we, we're still waiting on hearing from that. We have MOUs with three school districts. Um, and we certainly want to be able to, to meet the needs of those, those partnerships first. We've also um, gauged how much interest there is and it's huge. Uh, so just one example, on Facebook, if you and I says, hey, we're doing something, you get about three shares. We're, we're up to almost two hundred shares on this. We've been running webinars twice a week for the last three weeks to gauge interest. Yesterday, we had, we had thirty signed up and twenty-five attended, um, of which twenty-two were paras themselves and three were administrators. We are expecting a lot of people to apply, but then a portion of those not to actually meet requirements. And, and because chapter seventy-nine is, is the way it is, we really can't take anyone that doesn't have an AA or AS. We really can't take a parent educator that's teaching preschool, because they've got to have those field experiences. So, long story short, we want to take as many as we can, but we're not expecting to go that large on this first round. We know that we don't have the resources to go beyond about thirty or sixty. We, we know that uh, we're gonna have to work out some bugs on the first round. Um, but we, we want to see this happen over and over and over again throughout the years and we hope that.
And then, right, is it scalable and then also to transfer to, you know, outside by, of UN to higher state or?
Yeah, so the coursework that they would receive, this, uh, the, we, we had to work with um, also uh, HLC to make sure that what we were doing was, was right. In those eight-week courses, where you have the, the, the bundled coursework, those would all be seen as courses complete. So if a student went through one semester of, of our program and then wanted to move to ISU, we would look at that one semester, of course they did, and we would say that they, they did whatever was in.
One thing to put, to put some context around this um, and to commend them for their efforts of really kind of getting ahead of the game is this is in parallel to those registered apprenticeship.
Yeah, that was.
That we just announced at ten, and we didn't know the timing of this, so it was a trial and error. But if you remember, when I first shared this with you, we talked about it, we were about nine million dollars. Uh, the government, because there was such an incredible response, they funded nineteen programs with forty-five point six million dollars. So what they are doing, what these programs are doing, will completely change what this looks like. So you should be receiving, I guess, when we solve, so but um, it, it ties in so nicely with this conversation. And some of those barriers that it's talking about is the intent here is to figure out, how do we balance some of those and what needs to change to make sure that this is successful? Um, it meets the expectations, what we need for those educators. It's very exciting.
I could, or see what people's becoming interested in being a parent. Knowing that, knowing that there's an opportunity for me.
And think about that when you recruit, say, in your community, there's someone you can bring in, just like growing your own and growing your partnerships. It's our potential.
We're having those very conversations.
John, I would move that we approve the recommendation for you and I to offer the accelerated online practice-based elementary education and special education program until the next review scheduled for twenty-three, twenty-four.
Second? Second, Brooke, any further discussion? Are there none? All those in favor? They can by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, board reports. Brooke, stories? Mine's kind of boring. I think for that continued discussion of the issues that we're talking about on the table with administrators and with the teachers. I'll be at work in education. It's concerning, um, to you to roll. See an immediate fix, yeah. I also attended uh, a number of events in the local school districts and having some fun with that. Got to go to state track meet, got to go to state tennis meets, individual, and otherwise, so to see a lot of kids perform and that's always fun.
Uh, two updates from Cassandra Hall's. Uh, first update is the Community College Council is doing something a little bit different this year and our July meeting will actually be hosted in conjunction with the annual conference for community colleges in Sioux City. So we will be hosting our um, orientation, actually July twentieth, looking at journey. We're still working out all of the details and then we'll attend at least one day of the conference. So my understanding is we've never done that before. So we're excited to be a part of the annual conference with the community colleges and have that opportunity to um, hear the, hear the priorities from the community colleges and have that, the opportunity to be on site, do some relationship building and then do our orientation at the same time as well. So, um, the second thing I'll share is as far as a, a board member, the project from Cassandra Hall's. Um, we had an opportunity as a family that we purchased a greenhouse for our farm, but we're also part of the two direct hits from the recent duration and then also a mile from the recent uh, tornado. So decided that maybe it wasn't the best decision to build the greenhouse that we had purchased. So uh, met with some Carlisle community members to think about how to repurpose this greenhouse and um, ended up making some connections with Rob and Susan Fleming, who actually owned the enemy of farms in Carlisle, which is a nature preserve and also an intensive farm, which is adjacent to Carlisle Middle School. And so over the last two months, we've created a pretty fantastic partnership with the enemy of farms and we are going to construct the greenhouse on the intensive farm. And I work with the middle school to actually create an outdoor classroom with the greenhouse. Uh, as we talk about this, the greenhouse will actually be connected with solar power. So the middle school will be using it as a STEM classroom and connecting it with their environmental science class. But then we've also found a curriculum through Michigan State University that will take it through multiple chapters of composting and bugs and creating plants. Um, but community partnerships, we are also creating a community garden plot so that it will continue through the summer, working with Sprouts Stinkier. And hopefully, we're still working that out, that the children will maintain it through the summer and then we will use the produce that the kids create during the school year, um, to, um, sack the school pantry and then share produce actually with the nursing home. So, um, they're anticipating that the programming that will come from that outdoor classroom will reach a hundred and fifty kids through, the school year. And then they're also using it for their leadership development, mentoring through the special education programs. Um, and then their CATS program, which is the adult mentoring students in the classroom throughout the year as well. So, um, it's gonna be pretty exciting. So.
Yeah.
I'm finding that I'm a twelve year old called Sprouts.
Yeah.
Hopefully, we're.
I've got nothing to report.
I met with Wendy Mim Harold of NICC, the town clock class about their adult learning programs. And if you want to take a look at their propaganda, you can. It was very insightful. It was kind of during a break time for them. Uh, and we toured the facility and, she was very complimentary of the support throughout the Department of Education. Um, she did say though, that it's essential, I know it was, it's essential that, there'd be some allowance for uniqueness by among the community colleges, they, that maybe certain, places were better suited for some programs than others. And I think one of her comments was, there was, and, and any of you know more about this than, than I do, but uh, for some of their adult learning, there's forty hours of classroom training required, or at least for part of the program. And she thought they could, well, I think she could prove, she said, that they could serve many more adults. If they could somehow not have to do the forty hours of classroom training, that that becomes an obstacle to, uh, sort of field training that they do. Uh, and she did acknowledge it's needed for testing and, and it's also a component of funding for them. So I, I imagine that some of you are gonna hear about that bubbling up through, through the community colleges. But overall, it, it, it was just another, you know, sort of shining star of, alternate ways to educate people to improve their lives. I was very impressed.
I participated in the governor's STEM advisory council meeting, um, where actually we talked about the, the parent educator, program and stuff. That's, I think, very, very exciting. And I believe Collins Aerospace is hosting three, um, teacher externs this year, um, under the STEM program. I don't recall which locations they are. But that's the, um, six to eight week program, um, that, um, the STEM council has run for a number of years.
I, uh, we want to report on school accreditation because I led the, so the, we, we credited, we evaluated a charter school. It's the first year of being a charter school. Maybe six years they were a five year. Top of school. Decided to give them money as a public funded charter school. So that's the direction now. They were unique. It was a small school. They, they capped the class sizes in elementary through middle school at forty-eight students per grade level. Twenty-four in class. Their claim to fame is uh, leadership. They focus on leadership. In fact, every student, every graduate, every day, has a leadership class of three, five. And so there's several things that come out because of that. One of the policies they have there, they have a module of policies. So you get three tests. And we submit work after, submit, enter grades, your personal response to what you did by person. And so that's kind of contrary to what I've heard, what I've seen, um, I neck of the woods. Uh, they are required into a contract. This is a school with a, with a charter school authorization organization that oversees their operations. And they're, we probably have at least one teacher on their school to, um, be contributing. As well, hockey, the slogan is huge. Uh, they, their kids practice hockey. It's part of their school. They, for those who want it, want it. Not everybody, for those who want. But they do attract kids, uh, to the kids. We had one from North Carolina and one was from Las Vegas. And that's cool for the purpose of hockey. You know, their activities, yeah. A funny activity is that they have the NHL graph that they all get together on. It's almost like a dance. So it was interesting. It was, it's about this little different picture of what's going on. So I have for board reports and we're moving on to the twenty, twenty-three meeting schedule, master contract and meeting dates.
Think this is just, consideration of.
Just informational.
Just informational.
Point out that if needed, either charter contracts.
Yes. So if you do click on that link, the one in February would be just if they just based on that time that the chart. So we put that in the template, at least in the room. We'll be in a different time.
Do we, um, have any indications as far as the addition of?
Or did they update on that?
Well, it's neither here nor there. At this point, I know last time around it was kind of a rush for some.
Yes. Would, would this be like the Zoom we did? When we just looked at the two, or is this an in-person?
I think it's Tyler, Thomas and Thomas has stepped up for a minute.
He's right, he's right here.
That, that whole, could we get together or not, emergency? We don't have that now. So we, we'd have to get together.
The, the issue of whether you can establish a form, choose it through.
Right. Okay, so should plan on.
Yes, February.
Keep that day open.
Plan on in person, yes. Which is why we have a calendar.
All right, thank you.
All right, good to meet. Our dates. So we scheduled for a break. Also, a little behind schedule. Are we okay to push forward and? All right, let's push forward and we have the uh, work session with uh, MTSS and closing achievement gaps.
Everyone.
Yeah.
A couple times. Go, that was, that was multi-tasking, sorry about that.
We're trying to ease, we're up to Zoom, yeah. As Brad's getting picked up. As you, uh, I'll just introduce myself. My name's Barbara Holm. I took the department for some years and, I'm a teacher, just as a support, is one of the things that I work on, on many things. So we're, excited to be here, happy for, um, for everything that happens. Yeah, a PowerPoint ready for you. I've got MTSS and closing achievement gaps. Righty. So our whole topic, um, is MTSS, which is gonna touch a little bit on achievement gaps as well. Because that's really the purpose of MTSS is closing those achievement gaps. Open academics as well as social, emotional behavior health. We're focused on academics, as presentation. Um, the priority that is, uh, most aligned to MTSS work as well as the SEDH one. But for today is eliminating achievement and opportunity gaps. And there are two goals that are related to MTSS, uh, within the board's priorities and goals. And that is that our learners will have access to a personalized student-centered learning opportunities, um, so that we can differentiate for their needs, um, and then when they need that differentiation. As well as all teachers will have access to the training that's required really, uh, in order to serve children. Um, all of our learners, uh, preschool all the way up to grade twelve. Um, so train them in the best practices in literacy, instruction and cultural competency as well. So that's the alignment. Do this work? So what we're gonna be talking about is just a little bit on the achievement gaps data. You already have a whole bunch on that. It came in the very end of that. So just one slide. Um, and then we'll talk about MTSS. Talk about our view of key policies that are related to that work, uh, because it's embedded across several key policies. Um, and then how MTSS helps those achievement gaps, we're really doing a lot of that today. So in the review of the achievement gaps data, you had a lot of detailed information that was shared by Jay today. But really, the, the punchline here is that gaps are increasing. And as Jay said, not for the right reasons. Uh, uh, continuing overall gaps, uh, that increase that have been increasing between black and Hispanic, white students in poverty. Um, it is getting worse, uh, because of the pandemic. Now, we're still learning about all of the effects of the pandemic, uh, across all learners in Iowa and obviously across the nation. So we don't have that full picture of, um, what we're dealing with. Uh, we have a pretty good picture of what we're dealing with. And it's telling us that we have a lot of work to do, as Jay said. Um, and so it's really important right now for us to ensure that districts and schools have that plan, uh, to engage in accelerating learning. So I know accelerating learning oftentimes, for us, things, think about return to work or the pandemic, but we should be engaged in accelerating learning all the time, uh, for all units. So the pandemic highlighted that need, but really we should have been focused on that forever. Should continue to focus on accelerating learning. So we're gonna talk a little bit about MTSS, what that means. So before we talk about some details around MTSS, we're just gonna share a little highlight from John Caddy, who did a meta-analysis, um, actually has done this several times, uh, meta-analysis on what works. In classrooms and what really, um, impacts kids' outcomes. Um, across a lot of different, um, strategies, large range, uh, interventions. And, um, MTSS, in, in this, uh, particular recording, he refers to it as response to intervention. But nowadays, people normally talk about it as MTSS, not response to intervention. But in the meta-analysis, really, um, uh, Caddy found that it is quite an effective evidence-based intervention. Had an effect size of one point two nine, which is an incredibly significant effect size. Um, and it's not just student learners, but it's also systems educators meeting their needs where they're at. It's also the entire school meeting their needs where they're at. If you think about, um, our, um, every student's seat act and the way that we approach that. And thinking about how we serve our comprehensive sites and our targeted sites, it's much the same way. So we, we focus our resources on those schools that need the most, when they need it most. We focus our researches on those districts that need it the most. We need to do that with our learners as well. Um, so I'm gonna be quiet and we're gonna listen just a little bit to what John Caddy has to say about, response to intervention, just really with TSS.
Absolutely. Is there anything in particular I need to give? For audio? Yeah. Um, when you go to show there, there's gonna be an option that says, uh, use computer audio. I think that probably had my speakers.
ESU did.
My friends and we're.
Well, a lot of the issues about the RTI situation is very, very similar to, to what a lot of the visible learning work is. In fact, one of my frustrations with RTI is it's often only used with kids that have got special designations. It actually works with every kid. And in terms of the actual models, I'm reasonably blended in how I look at them because I'm not a great fan of saying, this particular method, the formative assessment side of it, um, particular instructional, uh, procedures side of it is what really makes a difference. I want flexibility in the teachers to ask themselves constantly, how do I know my impact? How do I know it's working? And if it's, is working, to continue it. If it's not, to change it. So I'm not wedded to one particular way of implementing the RTI model. What I like about the RTI model, again, it comes back to how we think. The RTI is always looking about the response to the intervention. And then making adaptations and changes in light, in light of that. And that's exactly what the visible learning notions are. And so, you know, it's no surprise that the impact, the effect size from that is quite high because it's a way of thinking. It's, if we're teaching and things aren't working, we change what we do. We don't come up with explanations why kids can or can't. And that's the beauty of the RTI model.
So I really appreciate that last statement that he, that he made. It's not, we change what we do. We don't, uh, create excuses or rationale for, you know, that, that we change what, um, how we instruct. And so I like to think of, um, actually change intervention to instruction because really it is all about responding to how kids are learning based on the instruction you're providing them. And so you need to make those really good database decisions on how you're going to, um, ensure that your instruction is matching a learner need. We have to make those good database decisions to think about how our support matches the needs of a school. And so it's just thinking about it. It's a wonderful way to breathe life into good continuous improvement. To the next slide. So this is our pyramid, our MTSS pyramid that we, it's obligatory on everything, but we have, um, we have, devised this to include a couple of things that we think are really important for us to remember. Oftentimes, when people talk about MTSS, they think about putting kids in holes. That, that, this triangle is about putting a kid somewhere. And it isn't about putting a kid somewhere. It is about the intensity of resources that we provide to kids when they need it. So we, I really like the way this triangle looks because you can see the layered effect and understand that, all children, each and every child in all settings must have access to our universal instruction. We don't say, oh, you're not making it a universal instruction and therefore we're gonna pull you out and then we're gonna provide you, this supplemental instruction over here. That's not what this means. And so that's why I like that layer of effect. Because it's very clear that all means all, each and every means each and every. Are, uh, have access to and to be successful in our universal instruction. The intensity of resources going up the triangle means that when a student is struggling, and is having a difficult time accessing, accessing that universal core, that means that we need to change what we do. We need to think about the intensity of the resources that we provide to that learner so that they can be successful in green. That's all that means. And it also means that if a, if a student needs even more, they're not being successful, they need even more support. It doesn't mean, oh, now we pull them out, we put them in red. We put them in the red birds. No, that's not what that means. It means that we intensify our support. We intensify our inventions. Uh, we changed the way that we, uh, provide that to, to a learner so that they can be successful. Uh we change the way that we uh provide that to to a learner so that they can be successful in universal. So um some of our really important components of MTSS across this is that everybody has access to that evidence-based robust universal instruction that green area, right? Um that's what makes that's what makes schools effective is to ensure that they have that evidence-based core. But then we need to make sure that we understand who needs more. A universal screening sometimes has a bad connotation, bad taste in people's mouth through screening people. Scary, right? But all it means is we got to figure out who needs more. Who needs that support? Who needs more intense resources? That's all that means. And we need to monitor whether the more that we're giving them is working. So that's what progress monitoring is all about. Because if it's not, then we need to use that information to change what we're doing. That's where the good evidence-based um excuse me, database decision is. We use the valid and reliable data that we have in universal screening to know what we're going to provide to kids. And we use that good valid and reliable progress monitoring data to say, but we do work. Because if it didn't, we got to change it. Um and we need those good evidence-based um in strategies, interventions, um resources that we provide in addition to to be uh evidence-based and to be effective. And so that's also a really critical part of uh MTSS, incredibly critical component of TSS. So we started MTSS a while ago, so it says Iowa's early, and then we literacy outcome. Because we started uh MTSS uh several years ago and really focused it on K three because there was um policy related to um MTSS that had the MTSS components in it called literacy implementation. And in that implementation of MTSS, just actually having access to universal screening data changed the way that people on schools across the state actually looked at what they were doing in K three of literacy. So if our total number of students um moved from out of low benchmark of way to above benchmark in those first two years. An incredibly incredible amount of kids and from low benchmark to above benchmark, just to get these data. And that actually translated into an incredible percent of schools that changed um in a positive way. Thirty percent from below to above. Over sixty-two percent of our districts changed the the way that they were approaching K three literacy instruction and saw a change. The sixty-two percent of them saw a positive change from below to above benchmark. And so you wonder is that okay, so that's all all districts, but what about the high performing ones, right? So um the top performing districts saw uh an incredible increase as well of thirty-two percent. So um we would say that uh MTSS has worsened, however, the pandemic hit. So we saw steady, so it's no bit steady um um changes in our data, and then the pandemic happened. And um it hasn't been as good during the pandemic. So we're ready um to get back to um our MTSS work um post-pandemic. And hopefully see that data increase.
All right. I'm calling to see if there's any questions at that point. We're starting talking about policies.
Is proficiency benchmark that benchmark proficiency, is that is that what we're talking about?
The benchmark is fastest assessments. So it's the universal screening that we do for K through three.
So so it's not?
Not it's not.
It's not proficiency.
It's not the Iowa um assessments. It is a measure that is more closely related to something around instruction, it's not an outcome assessment as the state assessments is. This is universal screening, progress monitoring, so.
So what happens in the eighty percent? Intuitively, I would say that pyramid has come down. Just intuitively, it said there are more kids who need intervention. Okay, need interventions to get to benchmark. So where am I wrong with that? Help me understand.
That's right, I understand.
Intuitively, I would say there are more kids who need intensive help than what we've identified here. That's just what I'm saying intuitively. I don't know that. I don't have any, I don't have any data for that. But I'm just wrong.
Yeah, I'm I'm happy to feel that. So what you're looking at here is a healthy system that has a a universal tier that's really effective, that green part. It's going to meet eighty percent of the kids' needs in a healthy system.
Good.
Now, what you're talking about there, we've got data to support your hypothesis, which is we've got a lot more students than uh that top twenty percent that actually need extra help. Um and so therein lies the challenge, right, is systems, districts and schools aren't staffed, don't have funding or fiscal space provide interventions for much more than twenty or twenty-five percent of their kids, right? So sure, um that means, and what Professor Hattie was talking about is, then we need to change what we're doing to make sure our system is healthy. So we've got to get our universal tier up to that eight percent threshold um to get there, which is a grand challenge.
I want to work with our districts and our schools. Oftentimes, the triangle is a little upside down, as you're referring to. And um as Brad said, we don't have, they don't have the resources to be able to do a deal with that. But what's happening is that their universal, their core curriculum isn't effective enough to meet the needs of all their students. So they actually have to work on the universal curriculum first. Otherwise, you're trying to save all these kids downstream and it's exhausting.
Yeah.
So you so the focus is on the green area because evidently the core curriculum that you have selected isn't meeting the needs of your population.
That helps a lot. Thank you.
Other questions before we transition?
Policy side.
Yeah.
All school, yeah, so eight percent is just.
It's it's a it's a guideline or a rule stone, right? If districts feel like they can intervene for thirty percent of their students and get them all to proficiency, great. Go for it. But.
Are we talking about getting a hundred percent of the needs of eighty percent of the students? That that's what that is, right? Not eighty percent of the needs of.
Yes.
Right, the first thing.
The first thing is correct.
Alright.
It does get a little confusing because we do that, but yeah, remember, a healthy, universal tier is going to meet at least eight percent of students' needs without extra help.
Yes.
But aren't students, I mean, like when you say that, I feel like it's a I mean, is it kind of you're talking about like a student here and a student here? Because I feel like every student is different, right? And every student has different needs on varying days, times, whatever, different subjects, right? So I might be hitting up, you know, proficiency and here, but then you might have a student split, right?
Yeah, absolutely.
Might be here and then red here or green here and red here or, yes, you know, I mean, so it's just, I mean, it's a constant target, right?
Across content areas, it's different. So you're not, you're not just you're not one way of being as an individual. So your needs are going to differ across content areas, across the age group, right? So yes.
So one of the things that we do that, to do that and support districts and schools to do is the universally screen for literacy. There's universal screening for math, there's universal screening for social, emotional, behavioral, well-being, and mental health. And like I said, it's unfortunately a lot of time is lined up in multiple areas, but there certainly it's lined up in some and not others. And when that happens, that's why it's why it's a whole school effort. We aren't just going to take a few folks or folks on reading and do this. We've got to we've all got to be on board to to do this because we can't we can't apply blanket solutions to each and every student. We've got to make sure to meet.
And we're conceding. We can't do the red intensity for everyone. Or you can hardly do.
You will exhaust yourself.
Right, you'll burn everybody.
Exactly. And you know, this works regardless of you know, content area, but we're really focused on literacy, mathematics, and social behavioral health, because those are the con, those are the eight-way areas, you know, if you don't read, you can't access the rest of the content. Get to math, STEM's kind of out of your reach. And if you don't have self-regulatory regulatory behavior, you can't, you're not attending class, right? So those are the three areas that exactly that was really focused on.
Great conversation. Any other reflections or questions before we move to the policy part?
Maybe related question, I'm looking at social emotional issues and of students and feedback I've been getting is that that's beginning to hit
Yes.
Recent years. Showing up in ramifications of uh behavior values a lot more acute than this good experience.
Yes, we've been.
Or maybe mental ability to do the work, but maybe not the mental ability to position to.
The past couple of years has been, I mean, has been a pretty significant impact on SED's needs, um all of our students and as well as all of our teachers. So it's a significant need that we need to address.
Need an MTSS for teachers.
We do, actually. There is FCL for teachers as well. So, yep.
The research is really bearing that out. We see it. Teachers need to have a deeper understanding of how their self-regulation works and self-management, interpersonal things, to be able to effectively teach kids. Sort of the I need to be okay, help you be okay scenario. Self-care for teachers is critically important. Okay. Um so policy isn't always the most exciting part of the conversation. The part we were just talking about is the most exciting part of the conversation. But what we really want to emphasize here is um how deeply ingrained MPSS is in the policy environment, which really actually helps us get leverage uh to move forward and supporting districts and schools. So there are several places where parts or all of MPSS is really built into law. Um our Every Student Succeeds Act Plan uh in special education, federal and state law. Um earlier, there's the implementation law, which we just talked about a little bit. Dyslexia, which we've been talking about a lot of support over the last several months. And um a chapter called chapter fourteen, which is school health services. So I'm just going to highlight a few things from each one of those policies now. Um so for our Every Student Succeeds Act Plan, so that's, our students succeed act, as we recall, replaced No Child Left Behind back in two thousand sixteen or so. And uh drives a lot. There's funding connected to it and and requirements for schools to don't meet expectations. Um MTSS is in our plan over one hundred and fifty times. It is the cornerstone of that plan. And so that's and that's approved by US Department of Education, but the expectations from US Department of Education in our ESSA work is to implement MTSS and to do that across the state. So that's front and center in that plan. Special education, um there's a really long history of having elements of MPSS. Professor Hattie was talking about RTI. It it used to be called RTI. Before that, it was called problem solving. It's been called several things. But it's it's this has been built into Iowa's Iowa's law um and federal law since the late nineties. So it's it's been in place for quite a while. Um and it features where we have those five features of those components of MPSS, right? Universal instruction, supplemental interventions, uh database decision-making, progress monitoring, supplemental intensive interventions again. But just really to kind of highlight that all those things are spelled out explicitly by name in those in those laws and early literacy implementation law, this is a Iowa-specific state law um that's uh kicked in, is it about two thousand? Fourteen, thirteen or fourteen? I have to go back to them. Yeah, it's it's been a while. We and uh that law calls out several aspects of MTSS to make sure we're supporting students that are at risk or persistently at risk for reading failure. Uh this law was specifically crafted to um try and beef up what we're doing in our schools to support early literacy development. So we have universal screening data. That's what Barbara was showing you earlier. Um and the name of the assessment is the past assessment, former assessment uh for students and teachers. Uh so that's uh something we provide in online data systems, the student success data system that we work with our schools on that. For universal screening and progress monitoring, which are called for. I mean, there's funding for this to, early literacy implementation law also helps fund the Iowa Reading Reserve Center. So this is a connection point. So it talks about universal screening, progress monitoring for students. Um the evidence-based instruction that you need to have as part of core instruction as well as um the need for interventions and the ongoing progress monitoring uh to make sure that students ultimately move from being at risk or persistently at risk to being on track and on target for their for their literacy development. With primary focus on K three, but actually extends um for many students until they get to benchmark, they get or proficiency for their literacy skills. Uh so dyslexia, um last time I was with you, laying out some of the efforts, we've been talking about some laws around dyslexia, but I really wanted to highlight here uh in the context of MTSS is the references in the support for dyslexia actually are called out in that literacy, early literacy implementation law. That's where a lot of that lives. The other thing I was just talking about for early literacy implementation law applies to students uh who either are diagnosed with dyslexia or demonstrate the characteristics of students with dyslexia. Um we must provide intensive reading instruction for these students. Um universal screening is part of that. What I want to highlight here is um there is uh the law talks about the need these needs to support uh effective screening, progress monitoring uh in interventions and instruction. Um but as we talked about last time, schools and staff in schools don't have the proper training or eventually to diagnose dyslexia. That that lives in people with different certifications that don't work in typically employed by schools, right? So that information, as we talked about before, really should be taken into consideration by schools when we're developing interventions, be it small group or individual. But that diagnostic process happens outside of these laws. That lives in a different spot. But the law does call out to make sure that the strategies that we're using are inclusive of those that are effective for students with dyslexia. So just want to connect some dots on some conversations we've been having over the last few months with MTSS. And finally, there's uh there's rules set out, chapter, chapter fourteen, which uh have a lot of things related to health services, inclusive of mental health and districts and schooling. What I wanted to call out in this set of rules here is that it calls specifically for tiered supports for social, emotional behavioral health. Multi-tiered systems of support uh are required for schools in the context of therapeutic classrooms, uh room clears, classroom management. Those are all things that are laid out there. And you can see some of the features of what happens in a tier uh support system for social, emotional behavior health that the law calls for. Um and we offer um guidance and resources online and and ongoing coaching for districts and schools in that space as well. So the last part, I just wanted to kind of pull this together with a few big ideas and then continue the conversation with our questions or reflections. We're wanting to hear. So the big things I want to communicate about MTSS is there are the five components, right? Universal screening, universal instruction, uh progress monitoring, evidence-based interventions, and database decision-making. So those are the five big things that we talk about with MTSS. Ever doing that work, especially with the universal screening, but also with more of the formative things, the progress monitoring is that's part of how we identify our gaps. We use data that Jay's was putting on the table with you. That's all part of what we do, what we ask districts to do, schools and and AEs. That's how we identify gaps, right? Um then the evidence that we go to our evidence base to make sure that the strategies that we're using to address those gaps are highly likely implemented with fidelity and matched where students' needs are, likely to start closing those gaps. MTSS gives us a framework for doing all that. Uh and the reason why we chose that uh amongst others is what Professor Hattie was talking about. Um for folks that aren't super into statistics and effect sizes and all that, a large effect size is point eight. So one point two nine is up the charts high, right? Um so that's that's why we chose that, is it has those five components. There's a ton of structure and research around it. We know that when it's done. There's a ton of structure and research around it. We know that if it's done well, good things happen for teachers. We do have evidence of success in Iowa. We showed you some statewide data. The pandemic did, we did take a hit on that. But we've seen that, and we've got case examples too. Be happy to share some of those if you'd be interested for districts and schools that have really bought in and we can show you the resultant outcomes of that too. You'd be interested to dig into some of that and hear from some of our schools that do this work. And as I noted last time during the dyslexia conversation, we're re-establishing this net, this support network that's for helps with all those policies and laws in an integrated school performance process of MTSS. It will include dyslexia as well. And we actually just had our kickoff meeting with our network Monday, this is Monday, Tuesday, right? It's been a long week. Monday and Tuesday, we had about a hundred and fifty P E and A E A personnel in the room together for two days digging into this and getting reset from, we were in pandemic mode, now we're getting reset. And there's a lot of energy in that room. People are excited to get back to this work. So we're very optimistic that we're going to be able to, those early trajectory successes that we are having, we're, we're really optimistic that we've got the right people and the right energy to have an effective mindset. So with that, any additional questions or reflections for Barbara and I? Any topics you want to dig into, might seem timeless.
Just for comparing fast, because it reduces when you compare people also fast. What are some things with like low effect sizes, or things that we should stop? I know that attention rate is a very low, almost negative effect size. What are some of the other things that schools do that aren't really effective or a proud of?
Yep, so what we see, and John Heinz got listed, I think, two hundred and some odd things that he's studied. They've done these meta meta analyses. It's typically things with less structure, right? Things that have got structure and clear, clearly defined space are the things that tend to move forward better. That doesn't mean there's a room for creativity and authenticity and, and students to make meaning of their learning are quite the opposite. But we should structure that up and be intentional about doing that. So when you see more whole language, for example, whole language strategies, those don't tend to be very effective. When you look at just inquiry-based approaches that aren't well-constructed, those tend to have zero to point one, point two types of effect sizes. Inquiry done well is incredibly powerful. But what the research analysis, it's not done well nearly enough. So that's, that's part of the challenge. Things that have high effect sizes are things that give students feedback and have an opportunity to make meaning of their own learning, and they're given really intentional learning experiences with our teachers, which MTSS offers us.
So I'm curious, because we, you know, we talk about the, the social, emotional aspect, especially during pandemic, and so do you place a higher emphasis on some of that, right? Or is this, where are all the components, you know, the literacy and the math, and then that socially emotional piece? They kind of all fit together, but is there a thought that you can have to focus on some of the the mental and emotional aspects either more strongly or first? Will they kind of get it first, or did you go into this?
Whether data be our guide. So it depends on the school and what their data tells us. So some schools will absolutely have an SEVH focus first, and as a foundation, before you go in first. Down ports, an example, a district that we really needed to focus on crisis response and violence prevention in order to get everybody safe and to feel safe in order to free their brains to learn. So that data showed us where we needed to focus with that district. Schools will also have that same data. We have good conditions for learning data that helps us make those good decisions as well as suspension and expulsion data, dropout data. So early warning system data tells us which, which area, which content area we really need to focus, drill it down, to focus in on first for school. So it's not going to be the same answer for each school. But I think just globally as a state, we need to focus some efforts on our social, behavioral policy. And we're talking as well, early, our intent, intent. And more of a focus on that.
Any other questions or reflections or areas you want to drill into?
This is, this is not easy. Oftentimes, it's goes beyond school and some of the conditions that students face outside of school. On that, I'm saying about the counselors, I think, are lacking a lot. Schools have counseling, they don't, it used to be a lot of, well, bring them to school. I'm vision, and now it's like, can I get you through the day? Now it's not at times, and, but, you know, it's, it's one of those things that you just begin, and you just do the very best you can, knowing that there's some long successes along the way, and maybe you said, that's one. As you're moving the right direction, it was best interest of kids. Any other questions for Ryan or Ron?
Thank you for speaking about that. I know we mention these phrases all the time, so it's nice to get some context behind what that means. Because, you know, we get lost in all of our afra, so I appreciate you guys coming in and speaking about that.
Well, for a pass, for my, I've heard this, because on the slide, it is that students are performing at a low enough level, then there is required additional instructional time. What's told teachers over the years, if the, the whole instructional time is constant, then achievements can be regarded. It's this, so providing additional, additional quality targeted instruction. I mean, the more of the same, but targeted for students, that's.
Absolutely. I really appreciate the opportunity and your work here too, for the amount we could do.
Yeah.
So much, yeah. Happy for that time. All right. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So I'm a.
For a second. Any further discussion of motions?